Let me turn that mic on, too. October 20th, Dorchester County Council meeting to order. I will ask if everyone will please rise. Councilman is going to lead us into invocation afterwards, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and the opportunity to be here today. And Father, just be with us here on county council as we do the county's business. As always, Father, we ask that you be with our armed forces all around the world. Just bless our first responders. Please be with them. Lord, just thank you to opportunity to have this meeting. Bless our country, bless our state, and bless our county. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes from the October 6th county council meeting.
So moved.
Second? There are a motion and a second need discussion. All in favor? We are unanimous, and I will say that Peter Smith is actually sitting, well, not sitting beside me, but on the phone here beside me, so I can hear that one. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Dorchester County employees with 20 years or more of full-time consecutive service with Employee Longevity Program. And we have one that we wanted to make sure that was not able to be at the last meeting. We want to make sure that they were here tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, this evening we have with us Mr. Eric Amos. He began his career in Dorchester County in July of 2005 with the Dorchester County Sheriff's Office, rising through the ranks in that department. Eric was promoted to corporal in 2013. In 2016, he transitioned from law enforcement to the county's IT department, where he currently serves as a network administrator, which is a significant progression to one of the highest positions in that department. Eric, we thank you for your dedication and service to Dorchester County and its citizens. I think of many times we spent the night together over in the old ELC and the new ELC. Coffee enhanced overnight that it was. Yes. But in all seriousness, congratulations with 20 years with Dorchester County. We thank you for staying with Dorchester County and helping us to make sure that our IT network works properly. So with that, we'll recognize you with 20 years of service, and we thank you for working with us to reschedule so you could be recognized. Thank you.
If you want to meet us up front. We're going to let Mr. Ward actually sit there today.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe Aaron can Photoshop him in there.
Is he in front or behind?
Yeah, in front.
He's from Dennis Lake.
I appreciate it.
I can sort of figure out how to use AI to get him in.
Trouble.
He went to the big conference.
Don't lose that yellow envelope. That's what you're really coming for.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
We good?
We good.
You good?
Come on.
Appreciate it.
Frankie, he really was at work.
Next item on the agenda, a request to address council, and I have two. I'm going to ask if you will come to the mic. I'm going to call your name, come to the mic, you're going to give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. The first on the list is Ms. Miriam Hutto.
I'm Miriam Hutto. My address is 275 Country Club Boulevard in St. George, but this is a concern of my mother's property at 300 South Pearl Avenue. And her name is Peggy Jones. So, ready? I'm here tonight asking county council to give urgent attention to the draining and flooding issues in St. George and upper Dorchester County. On August 24th, my mother's home on South Pearl Avenue flooded due to poor drainage maintenance during heavy rain. Her neighbor, Melinda Britt, who is here with us tonight, also experienced serious flooding. The water came from Reed Street and McClure Street and beyond that. Clawber Street is still full of standing water and overgrown ditches, and even today, water in the ditches at Reed and McClure is not moving. On August 30th of last year, I emailed photos of my mother's flooded property along with a detailed message to all of county council members, St. Georgetown Council, DLT contacts, and state representatives. The only response I received came from Representative Robbie Robbins, someone I've known my whole life who truly made an effort to help. The ditch beside my mother's house is something we personally maintain, but the flooding came from neighboring ditches that are ignored by the property owner's DLT, the county, and the town. I presented this to the St. Georgetown Council twice in September and October of this year, and still, after over a year, nothing has been done. As a lifelong resident and a taxpayer payer, it is incredibly discouraging. Dorchester County is growing very fast, and yet, we're dealing with the same ditch and draining issues we've been fighting for decades. There are serious inadequacies in the current drainage system. We see inspection after inspection, but no results. I was told there was a six-year ditch cleaning cycle, and I don't really consider that as maintenance, once every six years. There are places where the water could flow, but it's blocked by debris and overgrowth. One property owner gave the county easement rights back in 2006, and in almost 20 years, the county has never once cleaned the ditches. He finally gave up asking. This issue is being ignored, and that's not acceptable. I'm here tonight asking for a clear plan, a regular maintenance schedule, and action to begin immediately. St. George is growing, and drainage needs to be a top priority, starting now and starting from the ground up. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, next on the list, Mr. Tommy Fagan, again. Name, address?
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road, Somerville, South Carolina. It's just, whenever I talk, I'm a pretty frequent flyer here at county council meetings. When you go to ask questions sometimes, and whenever you're speaking to the councilman, they come back with, "You need to speak to your county councilman." Well, from what I've seen, nobody has recused themselves from voting for anything in my district. You all vote for everything countywide. I think you're all my county councilmen. You vote on what affects me. So, you know, hearing that cop out, "You need to talk to your county councilman," you know, that's, I don't think that's really fair to me or the other citizens of the county. Thank you all so much.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Council, I would tell you that I had some great news, but I don't. I have some good news. Dorchester County did participate in two programs with the Association of Counties. The first was the J. Mitchell Graham Program. We received basically second place for our Know Your Zone project. I will tell you that our PIO's office, along with EMD, did an outstanding job of putting on the expo, did an outstanding job of running the bridge run, basically explaining the importance of knowing your zone with two of our runners there, did an outstanding job of producing a video, have the analytics associated with how many times people went to the state's website to increase awareness, had over 11,000 hits on one video that councilwoman Rankin, Mr. Formisano, yours truly, and several others participated in. But nevertheless, we didn't get that award. Substantially, we received honorable mention again, along with Charleston and Berkeley Counties, for the Barrett-Lauramore Regional Award Competition, again, through the Association of Counties, through the Tri-County Biological Science Center. Again, a project that has statewide implications because it will take one of the three largest metros and provide local evaluation of evidence in the Biological Science Center, which is set to be completed next year. So I want to congratulate Berkeley and Charleston County for the regional award, but in terms of, again, not getting the overall award, but I think we've still done excellent work, and our folks should be recognized as such, so.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, council members time, Mr. Byers.
Thank you, Mr. Chenus. I would like to request a transfer of 2,900 from the contingency account to the training account to cover metro leadership visit as part of the Metro Chamber of Commerce. So I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second? There's a motion and a second need discussion? I think the only thing I would say is this is one of those things that would, as we, the clerk and I discussed this, trying to make sure that we get the budgets, get some of these numbers in the budgets upfront, so that we don't have to go through the formality of moving it from point A to point B, and we'll get this budget next year correct. So this is not a formality. But other than that, all in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda, or guests, and we have guests for some of them, and Mr. James O is going to start with a presentation of the monthly budget report. Capital Projects, next, with Mr. Adam Davis. Go through the list. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Chenus, members of council, and county administrator. I'll be presenting the monthly budget report for September 2025. As of September 2025, we are at 25% of the fiscal year, and we'll start with general fund revenue. So as of 25% of the fiscal year gone, we have collected 8.2% of the revenue. And this is mainly because the tax revenue has not been collected because the tax of bills are going out as of this week. So majority of the revenue for the county, especially the general fund, and some of the other funds that are funded by Milage are taxes. So we have 2.3% collected of, as of, for the general fund taxes. And of the licenses, we've collected 25%. And of that 25%, business license fees makes up 24.6% and 74.9% are building permits. Also, we've collected 20.9% of charges for services as budgeted, and of that, 46.5% of the charges for services are EMS charges. And then for the expenditure, we have expended 22.9% as of 25% of the fiscal year. So we are still below the expenditures as budgeted. Next is the library fund. For the revenue portion, we have collected 6.2% of the revenue as budgeted, and the expenditures, we have expended 21.9% of the expenditures. Also, the reason why we are at 6.2% is because the taxes have not been collected for the library fund. Next is the capital fund. Revenues as of current is at 4.1% collected, and expenditures 14.0% as budgeted. Next is the fire fund. On the revenue side, we've collected 1.4%, also funded by taxes. And also for the expenditure side, we have expended 23.3%. Next is the water and sewer fund. Revenue, we've collected 7.1%, and expenses, we've expended 12.6%. Next is the water and sewer impact fees. We have collected 56.2% of the revenue and expended 0.4% thus far. Next is the stormwater fund. We have collected 3.9% and expended 6.5%. And the final is the solid waste fund. We have expended, we have collected 1.3% of the revenue and expended 10.2% of the expenditure. And that, and that is the end of my presentation of the budget.
Any questions?
Opera. Okay.
On the opera, the American Rescue Plan Fund, we total what was received, including interest, And of that, we have expended 94.8% as budgeted for projects. And we have a list at the bottom there that has projects that have been completed. And of the A to Z projects, only four projects are still ongoing. All the rest have been completed.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you. Mixed up, Mr. Adam Davis. Mr. Davis, how are you tonight?
Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Chenus, members of council, Mr. Ward. Under the general construction update, I have for you mixed-use development of 500 North Main Street. As you're aware, a public meeting was well-attended last Wednesday to learn more about the project and encourage participation, envisioning what the green spaces, memorials, and Welcome Park would look like. Firmin continues the approval process with the town of Somerville. They are providing submittals to the design review board participating in review meetings during the months of November and December. Council will be briefed by Boudreau and Firmin over the next couple of council meetings, so you get an idea of what the timeline and to provide feedback on the conceptual designs. The coroner's office, we're happy to see progress after the last 30 days or so. We've had good weather. So the concrete pad foundation has been completed. Pre-engineering, the pre-engineered building erection is up, and exterior framing has been completed. Oakbrook Sports Complex, our pre-construction kickoff, stormwater, all of that will be held this Friday. Pending YMT Fall Prop programming coming to a close, we anticipate construction commencement next month. The healthcare facility here in St. George, the three-week look-ahead consists of flooring installation, drop ceilings, and casework. We're on track for substantial completion here for December, the end of December. Fire Station 8 in Ridgeville, interior demo is complete and construction has started. Somerville Library, the county executed the voluntary cleanup contract with the Department of Environmental Services last week. Terricon has provided a proposal, which has been approved pending the notice back to proceed from DES. Summers Corner Fire and EMS, over the next 30 days, site work will continue. Under slab utilities will be installed. Slab pores for living quarters are scheduled to be completed by the end of the month, and the apparatus space will be following that. So a lot of movement out there on that site. The veterans facility, we anticipated having final construction drawings today. Due to the issues in the cyber world, a lot of those applications were down today to be in receipt of those. So hopefully, we get those this week and have, be able to afford those submittals for permitting to get that project started. So any questions you have on these updates?
Yes, sir. Oakbrook starts next month?
Yes, sir.
12-month build time-ish?
Correct. Three, yes, sir. 360 days is what we're looking at. We can trim the fab. We'll do that.
Fair enough. And then Somerville Library, we're still looking at the site over there near the railroad track is the one that you're talking about?
Gum Street.
How big is that site? It's a couple of acres?
.95 acres.
.95?
Yes, sir.
.95, okay. And I asked just specifically this past Friday, I went to Spartanburg County, they, one of my former students is a librarian up there, and they just put a planetarium in their main library. So if that's something that we could consider as something to potentially add, if there's room, I just don't know, but I wanted to bring that up. I thought that'd be really cool for the science geeks out there like me as an option, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Not that we, you know, don't have enough things to deal with, but they did a lot of private donations to make that happen as well, so just want to mention that to y'all.
Understood.
Mr. Chenus, did you attend the meeting today about the Innovation Center?
I did not.
I did. Well, because I was, I did not either. But one of the things, too, Mr. Byers, I was last week up in Columbia. Richland County has done a super innovative thing, putting their school of innovation that serves Richland County alongside their new library. It's R2I2, something we possibly could look at, not necessarily for this site, but, you know, something to consider for sure, because it was super cool. I had a chance to visit that, tour the facility, and it had, you know, some of that planetarium stuff embedded in there. It's really fascinating. I would encourage us to take a trip possibly to have a look at that. It was very cool.
Are we still thinking about the children's museum on that site? I know that was something Mr. Chenus talked about a while back.
Yeah, the children's museum must be like that, but based off the, how the referendum was written, it couldn't be a separate, it had to be included underneath the same roof. So that was the reason that didn't materialize.
Mr. Byers, one thing about the spot that we're looking at, I think when we first, when I first said, when it was first suggested, hey, let's look at the site, I know as we looked, we were actually looking at a site next door that I think that owner had expressed some interest potentially at least in entertaining a future purchase from that, when they realized it wasn't that section. But on the opposite side of that, there were also two or three parcels that are basically uninhabited. If we are able to build on that site, this is probably the biggest and most obvious case of fixing a blighted area, you know, it's a gas pumps, brownfield site from that standpoint. And that block basically has an opportunity in adjacent land. Air's property in one case, I think a tax Hill property in the other case. And again, then there's a couple of operating small businesses in there, but the owner of that property had expressed initial interest of, hey, yeah, we, I'll sell it if we can come up with the right funds. So the potential for that nearly one-acre site in becoming, I don't remember, I want to say two and a half acres or so ultimately, if that whole corner was taken down, is certainly there.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, and sunshine, is, Mr. Tregus is not here, but I'm going to get Bruce Holder to come up. He is excited to come up and give us the updates. He did a great job last time on Public Works. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure to be here. So an update for the capital project updates. First being rice, in rice mill drainage, Public Works expects to wrap up permitting this month and advertise for construction in November. The design, built bridge replacement, Summers Drive, Coroner's Drive, and Deer Run Road. Construction of the Deer Run Bridge replacement continues. All piles have been driven, and they are in the process of pouring concrete for the bins, moving along there. Ashley River Park Connector, revised plans were submitted to CWS for concurrence that soil nails walls will not impact the ready-stowed water tunnel. Upon approval, we will move forward with final plans permitting a right-of-way acquisition. Hopefully, first quarter of next year, that will be. Latson Roads, streetscaping. We held the pre-construction meeting on September the 9th. The construction notice to proceed was issued October the 1st, and the contractor is expected to mobilize, you know, next week, first of next week. Oakbrook Wayfaring signage, the Jock contractor has submitted cost proposals for both the town and the county's wayfinding projects, which have been reviewed and are being routed for approval, along with a CEI task order. Spring Road, we're two months ahead. Construction will be substaniously complete this month. You know, it was scheduled to be completed in December 25. The contract is supposed to, completion date. Maple Street widening. All concrete work on Maple Street between US 78 and the end of the project towards I-26 are complete, which includes the sidewalks, handicap ramps, and driveways. The contractor is now focusing on Highway 78 continuing with drainage, insulation, grading, and curbing. Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, our online public information meeting and comment period ended September the 25th, and we received 90 comments. The design team will be going through all comments, which will be considered as we move forward with the design process. The SC widening, SC 27 widening, excuse me. The construction bid opening was October the 10th. We received six bids, most of which of those were under budget, you know, which is great news for both fronts. Once the bids are reviewed and approved by the engineering consultants and EDA, we will move forward with the award. US 78 Phase 3, you know, west of Dawson Branch Road to Maple Street. The engineering consultant is evaluated and incorporating design revisions based on recommendations that were approved by SC DOT's Value Engineering Approval Committee. The US 78 Phase 3B from Maple Street to Berlin G. Myers Parkway. The right-of-way agent is continuing to meet with property owners in the field and getting appraisals ordered as they receive title opinions. Central Street Avenue and Parsons Road improvements. We have prepared responses to the 110 public comments we received during the public comment period, and the information will be posted as an update to the project website this month. Dorchester Road improvements from Old Trolley Road to Charleston County Line. We received 436 total comments during the 30-day public comment period that ended on August the 15th. The consultant is now compiling and summarizing those public comments. Deale Mail Highway improvements, the H-A-R-H-S, excuse me, down to Clubhouse Road. The engineer has started to lay out proposing road alignments, which we are reviewing and refining to minimize wetlands and property impacts. The Linger Longer Drive extension, the engineer consultant has started the right-of-way acquisitions and final plan development. Main Street improvements from Carolina Avenue down to Luke Avenue. We held a coordination meeting with the town of Somerville on September the 19th to begin reviewing concept alternatives, and we plan to hold a joint public meeting in January. The Miles Jameson Road improvements, the public information meeting will be held on November the 6th at the Eugene Sayers Elementary School from 5:00 to 7:00. Road signs and postcards to advertise a public meeting will be out at least 15 days ahead of the meeting. We're actually putting those out Wednesday. acquisitions and final plan development, development. Main Street Improvements from Carolina Avenue down to Luke Avenue, uh, we held a, a coordination meeting with the town of Somerville on September the nineteenth to begin reviewing, uh, concept alternatives, and we plan to hold a, a joint public meeting in January. The Miles Jameson Road Improvements, the public information meeting will be held on November the sixth at the, at the Eugene Sayers Elementary School from five to seven. Road signs and postcards to advertise the public meeting will be out at least fifteen days ahead of the meeting. We're actually putting those out Wednesday. The consultant is drafting, uh, excuse me, Orangeburg Loop, the consultant is drafting the public meeting displays. We have two public information meetings on December the ninth and eleventh, one of each end of the project. One meeting will be held on December the ninth at Greg Middle School, and the second meeting will be held on December the eleventh at First Baptist Church of Jetburg. Stalsville Loop, the public information meeting was held on September the thirtieth from five to seven, uh, PM at Stalsville United Methodist Church, and there were over a hundred-and-thirty in attendance. All meeting material are available on the project website, and public comments will be accepted until October the thirtieth. US seventeen A Widening, um, you know, down to Research Center Drive, the consultant is starting to look at the hydraulic modeling, modeling design criteria for the Ashley River Bridge Crossing and how that may affect the project as well as upstream and downstream areas. West Cop Boulevard, the public information meeting took place on October the ninth at Fort, excuse me, at Fort Dorchester Elementary School, and there were over seventy in attendance. All meeting material are available on the project website, and public comments will be accepted until November the ninth. Patrick Boulevard, uh, the West Cop Boulevard down to Weber Boulevard, the city of North Char- Charleston has executed their contract with the design engineer, and they are scheduled, they have scheduled the verification survey needed to complete the final design and permitting. This project is expected to go to construction next year. Fairfield Road Paving, construction, uh, notice to proceed was July the first, clearing and grubbing is complete, and the contractor is installing roadside ditches. There are about seven to ten power poles that are being relocated, and Dominion is acquiring the necessary easements. That concludes the, uh, Capitol Project Update.
Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Last but certainly not least is Mr. Larry Harper, we're, we're trying to figure out what, there, there's a couple of things in history today, so we're gonna, we're, we're guessing to figure out which one it is.
Good evening, Council. October twentieth, eighteen oh-three, United States Senate approved the purchase of the Louisiana Territory, which doubled the size of the United States with the addition of five-hundred-and-thirty million acres for the cost of fifteen million dollars, which works out to be about three cents per acre, or real deal in terms of that. Other side note that when they were trying to buy that, uh, we were just off, Jefferson wanted, wanted to offer ten million dollars just for the purchase of, of, uh, New Orleans and West Florida. We got the whole thing for fifteen, and, uh, the rest is history. Second Phase of Stratton Two and Berett Street, contractors completed all water installation. All residents have been connected to the new water lines. Only outstanding issues are the paving at the car wash entrance, site restoration. Once these outstanding issues have been completed, final inspection will be conducted, and then requests for full permit to operate will be submitted. For Stratton Two Capers Phase Two, the grant is waiting for the CDBG to issue of a notice to proceed. DC Regional Waterline Interconnection Phase One, contractors installed about twenty-five, twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-five linear feet of sixteen-inch, uh, water main, that's about seventy-five percent of the thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three linear feet. Contractors working to install their horizontal directional drills along seventy-eight, near the water tower, and near the Walmart interests. Phase Two of that project, the design plans are at ninety percent, uh, we're working to get all of our permits. Eastman acquisitions actually underway. We gave the priority, uh, to acquire the first five tracks, which allow us to extend that, uh, Phase One, that's the con- that's the change order that I approved, uh, last, uh, council meeting. So, and DSS to pay to Pump Station Four, Force Main, both Phases One and Two are under construction. Phase One has, um, waiting for valve delivery, expect it this week, and once those valves are at hand, our pipe installation will begin. Phase Two will start clearing and grubbing, and excavation for the pump station actually began October seventh, so that project is, is well underway. For the Hollyville Pump Station Force Main reversal, um, engineers completed their hydraulic calc, that proj- project stands at sixty percent. For the Highway fifteen to twenty-six interchange, we got a, we hit the sixty percent milestone, working on permit submittals. Pump Station for Highway one-seventy-eight Water Extension, contractors mobilized and has actually installed two thousand linear feet of twelve-inch pipes, so that project is well underway. Down at, uh, the Lower Waste Water Treatment Plan Expansion, we're at fifty-three-point-seven percent complete, based on the latest pay applications. Contractors scheduled to install yard piping, leak testing, distribution box forming pour, the influence pump station, install some new channel frames at the UV structure, rails, and a bunch of stainless steel piping and aeration basins. Maple Street Relocation, we've, we, final walkthrough was completed October second, was stopped doing to the contractor, not performing the identified work, uh, we have to reschedule that final walkthrough. For Pine Tree, or Pecan Tree, uh, Site Extension, we did solicit two bids on that project. If you recall, last time, we had zero bids. Uh, that bid, we had, uh, the parent low bidder, is at four million, six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-ten dollars, a lot of money, we'll say. Um, we are currently under, under reviewing that, those bids are under review now. For Papa Grove to Red, Red Top Construction, drilling contract is expected to start, um, this month, and once the developer has completed, uh, several access roads. I've been informed this morning that those roads have been completed, so we're well on the way for that. Pump Station Two Seventy-two Upgrade, Assie Ridge, uh, we had a visit, uh, on September twenty-sixth from ReWAP. ReWAP is the, uh, utility that serves Greenville, Spartanburg, and a couple of areas up, up north, upstate as they all call it here. Um, they were really impressed, and, um, they were using that as a guide to a couple of pump stations that they're looking at building similar size, because those, if you recall, seventy-two is, is rated at about sixteen million gallons a day in terms of cup, pumping capacity. For Pump Station Seventy-two Force Main and water, and threw a water line in there, um, we had sixty percent design on that. This is a job that's being done by C-Mar, if you kind of recall. Um, collaboration's going really well, we have weekly design meetings, and we've have, uh, Eastman acquisitions, uh, currently ongoing. Pump Station Ten Force Main Replacement, our process, that project is now at ninety percent, we've got Eastman acquisitions, uh, ongoing for that project. Force Main, for Pump Station Twenty Force Main, Redversion, if you take the lovely drive up seventy-eight coming, uh, from Somerville, you actually notice there are pipes strung along the highway. That is, that is our project. Um, we've got, um, contractors mobilized on site, he's using that ten-inch pipe near the Woodland High School area, and of their first, uh, horizontal directional drill. So you'll see a lot of activity along seventy-eight in the coming weeks. Shady Grove, one-seventy-eight area pump station, Force Main, we're just waiting on the permits for those agencies, so we can put that project out to bid. Some of Haven Water, uh, line improvements, got the draft easements, uh, going on, we've been working with C, um, Charleston Water System, because it seems like they may have demand a little bit further west of where we are, and we're trying to see if we can collaborate on that, uh, pipeline. For the water line replacement in Pepper Ridge area, we've had, uh, thirty percent milestone, and for the winding reach project, contractors received a revised punch list, they had several leaking meter pits that had to be repaired, uh, multiple items, areas to be reseeded, and we had, uh, draft easement for legal review, uh, where the pipeline was installed outside of the easement.
Reevesville Water Line Upgrades Phase One.
Ah, that, I don't miss that. Ah, DOT encroachment permits have been received, we actually submitted a RI grant application, uh, we put that in on September eighteenth, and we're looking for favorable reception of that grant. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Any questions? I think the only thing that we, we all missed out, um, MacArthur returned to Leite Gulf.
Yes, sir.
Fulfilling his promise, um, Nixon fired.
Watergate. This was the Saturday.
Saturday Night Massacre, and, and most importantly, for some of us impressionable ones at that point in time, um, Lynard Skin- Skinner's plane crashed.
That's correct.
Mississippi, and we lost Ronnie Van Zant and.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
Cassidy Gaines, yeah.
And it's the birthday of Snoop Dogg.
And my brother.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is County Administrator time, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I have several items for your consideration, and apparently I need to back off of the microphone a little bit. Uh, first item for your consideration is third reading regarding Ordinance twenty-five-dash-sixteen in ordinance to amend Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, Ordinance Number Oh-four thirteen is previously amended with respect to Article twenty, Section twenty point one point one, general lot design standards for the purpose of excluding townhome development from the maximum lot width-to-depth ratio requirement, asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? And I have just been alerted that Mr. Smith actually dropped that connection, so we are, we will be all in favor?
Aye.
Or six in favor, one absent.
The next item I have for your consideration is the third reading regarding rezoning request number nine thirty-four for Elliot Locklear to rezone one-point-eight-three acres located on Latson Road near Somerville, TMS number one-five-four dash ten dash thirteen dash zero-zero-one through zero-zero-five dash zero-twenty-eight through zero-thirty-eight, one-fifty-four fourteen oh-seven zero-eleven through zero-fifteen dash twenty-three through thirty-three from General Commercial District CG to Single Family Attached Residential District R-three asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and several seconds, any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor, one absent.
Uh, next item I have for your consideration is also third reading. This is regarding rezoning request nine thirty-five by Eric Stem to rezone point-eight-two acres located at one-fourteen and one-eleven Cone Lane near Somerville. TMS number one-three-five sixteen zero-zero-zero twenty-seven and one-thirty-five sixteen zero-zero-zero-zero-six from Office and Institutional District O-I to Single Family Residential Manufactured Housing District R-one M, asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Six in favor, one absent.
Uh, next item is third reading regarding rezoning request number nine thirty-seven by Greg Minton to rezone three-point-seven-five acres located at Myers Mail Road and Highway seventy-eight near Ridgeville, TMS number zero-ninety-eight zero-zero-zero-zero-one-nine-two and zero-ninety-eight zero-zero-zero-zero-two-nine-six from Agricultural Residential District AR to General Commercial District CG, asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Or six in favor, one absent.
Uh, next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to transfer one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars in personnel savings from the Dorchester County Sheriff's Office to fund training reimbursements to other law enforcement agencies for certified law enforcement officers. This is required, uh, when we have to reimburse agencies for, uh, folks that we have obtained that have completed the academy and been certified, to reimburse them, this should cover us through the remainder of the year, and ask for your approval as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? I'm gonna, I'll, I'll say one thing, I'm, I'm, was really actually pleased to see this on the agenda, because so often, we, we were actually, um, having someone pay us for losing those officers. It's really nice to see, um, with, with the new sheriff in, in town, basically bringing some of these officers back, so, thank you, Sheriff.
We got a lot of answers.
All in favor? We are six in favor, one absent.
Uh, final item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to amend the Dorchester County HR Policy Manual to include an annual leave-sell-back program. This will allow employees that have, um, leave that they have been unable to use due to vacancies and due to tenure to sell back up to eighty hours, which is the equivalent of two weeks based on a twenty-eighty-hour full-time schedule, and I will ask for your approval of that, it's recommended by HR, and again, this is fund, funded from savings that are currently available due to position vacancies.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? I think the only thing that I'm, I'm gonna ask and, and for staff to look at is the, the standpoint of, when you look at the number of hours that the employees have, we need to figure out, in, in some cases, it's nearly impossible, but we need to have people that earn vacation to take that vacation, um, because it's needed for the soul and everything else, so we, we need to try to get, I'm not, I, I have no issue paying them, but we, we want them to also take that vacation when they possibly can, no question about it. All in favor? Or six in favor, one absent.
Uh, if I can, Mr. Chairman, um, we compiled the list, every employee on that list, um, we have provided advance notice to their supervisors to assist them in scheduling that. Unfortunately, due to some of the vacancies, as we've talked about, um, public safety one area, uh, where the sheriff again is doing the super job of trying to fill those vacancies, with the detention center, you gotta cover those shifts, and so, as such, we'll do our
Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions.
Are we there yet?
We're, 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 we are close, we have four, and, um, Ms. Conrad will get with the, uh, couple of folks here that are still on that list to, to make sure that some of them might, they, I think they, they may believe they're filled, but we just need to make sure. So, other than that, next item on the agenda, um, County Attorney's time, Mr. Frampton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first two items deal with the same project previously identified as Project Dorchester Housing, now identified as Dorchester Residential LLC. The first item, I would request that the council hold a public hearing, uh, regarding Ordinance twenty-five-dash-seventeen, which would authorize the amendment of the existing amended and restating agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park bind between Dorchester County, South Carolina, and Orangeburg County, South Carolina dated as of May seventeen, twenty-ten, to enlarge the boundaries of such industrial park to include certain property located in Dorchester County, South Carolina, now or hereafter owned and, and/or operated by Dorchester Residential LLC, a company previously identified as Project Dorchester Housing, and/or one or more companies related there to, and other matters relating there to, I would request that the public hearing be held at this time.
I will open the public hearing, if anyone would like to come speak, I ask you to come forward, give your name and address. I will ask you to come forward, give your name and address.
Name is Timothy Lewis, address six thirteen East Main Street. This is totally impromptu and, of, of, I was reading that, um, ordinance, is that alluding to, um, some type of attainable housing or affordable housing-type project?
Please.
Yeah, yes, sir, it is. So, um, the county has, um, partnered with Mr. Missouri, um, and he has a piece of property off of Grayback Road, and long story short, um, what our plan calls for is sixty percent, uh, eighty percent, and one-hundred percent AMI, which is area median income.
Yes, sir.
With the understanding that that level will allow for teachers, firefighters, uh, paramedics, um, folks that work in the sheriff's office and police officers, to be able to afford that property based upon two incomes in a household. Um, and we have also given, sorry, we've also given first reading to an ordinance that has similar language to that, um, and as such, um, we believe this will provide an opportunity for workforce housing, um, to ensure we have places for people that are essential workers to, to live within our county.
Is, is, um, just, just to follow up real quick, um, would this be the first project of its kind in the county?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, um, if, somewhere I would like to follow up afterwards and learn more. Okay, if, some way I would like to follow up afterwards and learn more about it, if possible.
Yes, sir, and we're glad to share the ordinance also that's been given first reading in addition to this becoming public record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road. Yes, sir, you're speaking of teachers in this, how this would be part of a teacher's compensation. Under 388, that only comes from the taxes on 6% properties, 6% industrial, commercial properties. That's a state deal where they separate the money. This would be teacher's compensation that would be going to the teachers, that you keep speaking to the teachers, so that'll run into state law. How have you got that figured in? You know, the price that we're paying to develop this, how is that being figured into 388? Because teacher's compensation is part of the school operating expenses, totally covered by 388, under that law that was passed, 388. So, how does that work with the teachers getting more compensation by getting a reduced rate on their living expenses, on their, on their housing?
So, I'm not sure I understand your question, but when we looked at the average wages for starting teachers, they're approximately $50,000. The area median income is $110,900 for the area identified, and that is the reason why when we look at 60%, 80% AMI, it allows it to be affordable, because that would put that in a range that's less than $110,000 being required for a particular household. Very specifically with 6% property, which is what this is, it is under a multi-county industrial park ordinance, and as such, it allows for public infrastructure credits to be provided to offset the cost.
That's not answering the question. 388 involves teacher's compensation.
With all due respect, sir, Act 388 covers several things beyond teacher's compensation in terms of funding operating for schools. It also includes a cap on millage, so it is not as simple as what you're presenting.
You're still not answering the question. How is this going to be dealt with, with the state? Because that comes out of under 388, and whenever you're compensating the teachers and giving them a reduced rate on rent.
Time's up.
I got it. Mr. Fagan, this, this, this action, he's saying it's for the teacher, it's not exactly stating it's specifically for teachers, firefighters and stuff. Anyone that's in that price range can get it. So, the fact that it's open to anyone, it just targets the price range of the teachers, the firefighters. So, you're not saying that these are the only people that can be in it, so it doesn't affect that.
Folks with those median income.
Medium income. It's all, it's all in whoever falls in that medium income.
Qualifies for the workforce housing.
They can work for scout boats, they can, whoever, whoever falls in that medium income.
So, it's open for everybody?
It's open for everyone. It's just, we tried to get it into that price range that fits this demographic.
So, we gave examples that the public can relate to.
The people working at McDonald's, the people working at the food stores.
Anyone can live there.
They don't make nearly what the teachers make.
We're, we're, we exhausted that. Is there any other comments? Anyone else?
You know, the state, I'm sorry, my name is Arlene Wheeler. I live on Somerset Lane in Somerville, and, you know, the state already provides a program for firefighters and teachers and county employees called the Palmetto Heroes Program, and this is kind of like doubling up on it, it looks like to me. I mean, the state gives them a much reduced rate, they give them a down payment assistance that if they stay there for 10 years, they don't have to pay back, I think it's up to $20,000, and this is doubling up on it. I mean, why should the county be getting involved in something that the state's already doing? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Here's my question. Why, why are the two of you so opposed to helping out people in that income bracket? That seems odd, that's, no.
No, sir.
No, that's a rhetorical question.
That was a rhetorical.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
He asked me a question.
That was a rhetorical question, certainly. He did not require an answer. So, thank you. Ms., Mr. Byers, I think, just to be safe, I, and I'm sorry, Mr. Hearn, I think Mr. Byers was gonna respond to what the Palmetto Heroes Program actually was. Or a.
No, sir, I'm done.
Purchase, it's a mortgage purchase, I think, if that's correct. And I think, I heard Mr. Ward say very specifically, this is still 6% property. This is still a rental property from that standpoint, which it remains a 6% tax collection from a property tax standpoint. Is that your understanding, Mr. Missouri? Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure that that was, I, again, mine was a rhetorical question, obviously, as well. Is there anything else? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask.
Following that, those nonsensical comments, Mr. Chairman, it's now time for third reading of the Ordinance 25-17.
Thank you.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor and one absent.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would request a public hearing be held on an Ordinance 25-18, which authorized the expansion of the boundaries of the joint county industrial park jointly developed with Orangeburg County to include certain property located in Dorchester County, the execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Dorchester Residential LLC. A company previously identified as Project Dorchester Housing and other related matters, I'd request that the public hearing be held at this time.
And I will open the public hearing, and again, if you have any comments you'd like to make, I'm gonna get you to say your name and address.
Take it, I got three minutes again.
You got three minutes, as long as they relate to that product, that item specifically, the public infrastructure credit.
Yes, sir. And, yeah, I'm not opposed to taking care of our county employees or teachers.
We need to hold this to the public infrastructure credit, sir.
I'm, instead of giving it to developers, give it to the employees, please.
Thank you. Anything? All right, I will close the public hearing.
This time, Mr. Chairman, I'd request third reading of Ordinance 25-18.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor and one absent.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd request authorization for the administrator to execute the independent consultant agreement for the possession of county assessor.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Ward, do you want to touch on that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. We have an opportunity to utilize our former county assessor as an independent contractor to provide oversight for assessments that are being completed, as she is fully qualified to do both commercial and non-commercial through December 31st, 2025, and that's our request,
Any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor and one absent.
And my only further explanation on that, sir, is that position is currently vacant, so that will be funded from savings.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, drive safe.